Tonight, our prayer will be led by our local pastor, Pastor Steve Borland from Journey Church. Thank you so much, Pastor. Yes, sir.
If you don't mind, I'd like to read a scripture verse before I pray, if that's okay. Just something as Tim asked me to come pray this evening. The Bible talks about in Psalm 127, verse number one, "Unless the Lord builds the house, the builder's labor in vain; unless the Lord watches over the city, the guards stand watch in vain." And my prayer for you, people that lead this city, is that God would lead you. And that's what I want to pray for all of us in this room today in this city as it continues to grow. God, would you join me in prayer? God, thank you for who you are today. I thank you because we have hope found in you, Christ Jesus. God, I know that we celebrate this time of the birth of our Savior. I pray, God, that we would continue to be reminded of the reason why we have hope, and it's found in you. God bless this night. Bless all of the business that's going to take place. I pray, God, that you would lead these leaders with your wisdom, that they would lean towards you for understanding and guidance to guide this city in the direction it needs to go. And God, I thank you that we can put our trust in you. And the word declares in James 1:5, "If we lack wisdom, we ask the Lord." So I pray, God, if these men and women need wisdom and guidance and direction on making decisions, they would lean upon you. God, we just ask for these proceedings tonight. All this business will be blessed by you. In Christ's name we ask. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor.
I'd like to call the December 2nd Committee of the whole meeting to order, please. Roll call.
Mike?
Here.
Tim?
Here.
Larry?
Here.
Amber?
Daniel?
Here.
Misty?
Here.
Next, we have the Pledge of Allegiance to our left.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, I seek approval of-- well, let me refrain here or rephrase. I would like to add our end-of-year bonus for our employees, item J, if that would be amenable to the rest of the council.
I would be okay with that.
No objection.
But I also would like to mention in item G, it says, "A discussion of a resolution declaring an LOI." It needs to be LOE. Just a little typo.
And there's also one more thing. We need to remove item A off of new business. That'll be at a later date.
With changes noted, I seek approval of the agenda.
I'm sorry, what were we removing? This is our money. Item A. Wonderful, thank you. I will make a motion to approve with those aforementioned changes.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Tim?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Next, I seek approval of the November 4th Committee of the whole minutes.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Tim?
Roll call.
Larry?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Misty?
Epstein.
Tim?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Next, I will take comments, or we will accept comments from the citizens. Hold your comments to three minutes or less, if you would, please, and nothing that is on the agenda tonight.
Good afternoon. Kenneth Lovett, Fairwater Road. Some of y'all have put a lot of time and energy into stopping me from speaking in public meetings. The planning commission has removed public comments completely from their agenda. Tonny Town has the responsibility to protect their citizens. There are ways to address the vapors emitted from Eco Vista. You should reach out to an environmental expert to direct you on next steps. Talking to Blake Spahl is not going to help. I would like to read some information to y'all. Overall, the effects on mental health and personality are generally associated with chronic low-level or acute high-level exposure to specific neurotoxic vapors like hydrogen sulfide and VOCs rather than the major landfill gases, methane and carbon dioxide themselves. Several hazardous vapors emitted from landfills have been linked to symptoms and health outcomes that affect mental health, mood, and personality. The primary gases of concern are hydrogen sulfide and certain volatile organic compounds, VOCs. Mental and personality effects. VOCs have been linked to various neurological symptoms, including personality changes, memory loss, poor attention span, irritability, and anxiety. Other symptoms. Exposure also commonly causes headaches, fatigue, dizziness, nausea, and eye irritation, which and respiratory irritation, which can indirectly impact overall psychological well-being and contribute to feeling of chronic stress. I think we've seen that a lot here. Volatile organic compounds, VOCs. Landfills produce various VOCs such as benzene, toluene, and xylene from the decomposition of materials like plastic solvents and paints. Neurotoxic effects. Neurotoxic effects. Long-term exposure to these substances, even at low levels, has documented neurotoxic properties. Specific effects include impaired memory and attention deficits, fatigue and dizziness, associations with an increased risk of psychiatric disorders, including depression, anxiety, bipolar disorders, and schizophrenia. Other factors. Oxygen displacement. Methane and carbon dioxide, the primary components of landfill gas, are odorless and colorless and can displace oxygen in enclosed spaces. While rare in ambient air in enclosed areas like basements, this can lead to symptoms from lack of oxygen, including impaired coordination, fatigue, nausea, and in extreme cases, unconsciousness. That's just a few things that I've been talking about for four years, and we have done nothing. Thank you.
Tammy Gray, 1984 South Penalto Road. Please file this, Ms. Artemani, in a minute, if you don't mind. I think I gave you a copy. Council members, I present my concerns to you regarding Mayor Russell's use of taxpayer dollars to reimburse for private legal services. And while the principal has been repaid, the citizens are still owed the interest for that loan Mayor granted herself permission to take from our coffers. I am in hopes she will find the will to pursue this matter and seek reimbursement. The mayor has pleaded ignorance repeatedly. She cannot claim ignorance with this, and allowing it to be swept under the rug or portraying her as victim only empowers this sort of behavior. Citizens deserve better. Thank you.
Mick Wagner, 409 Penzo Avenue. I gave Ms. Artemani three documents that she'll make copies and get to y'all. And I sent it in an email to Mark and Mr. Clark earlier today. But two or four months ago, I pulled a permit for a house that I'm building on Arbor Acres Road. About $8,000 worth of permits. And when my plumber got there, an individual from WWA came by and said, "You've got to buy a permit from us." I recall, when I was on the Washington Water Board, there's a state law that has been in effect since 2017, particularly noted as ACA 1428102. That law was amended in '17 to provide exclusive authority to cities regardless of the water purveyors within their city limits, meaning that a rural water system has no authority to charge, as had been previously, for plumbing permits. As a result, my plumber had to pay $250 to WWA to get that permit. Well, I'm not the only one with that problem. I spoke with the Elm Springs Mayor, Mr. Downey, and he had the same situation going on up there. I have provided-- one of the documents that you'll be receiving is a cease and desist order that the city attorney for the City of Elm Springs has sent WWA in the last few days. In addition to that, there's an AG opinion that in September, when this started, Ms. Lunchroom contacted the AG's office, and they agreed that our reading of the law is correct, and they have no provisions. So I'm encouraging and asking the council to please follow suit whenever y'all decide who your attorney is and send a cease and desist letter because there's going to be-- and I'm in contact with several other cities-- that's enjoying the same pain. So hopefully, we can get this thing finally put to bed. Finally, I was called out in a public meeting by the mayor last week about not using or not texting. And I FO'd a few texts. And on 10/21, I think that was the city council meeting, and at 6:36 PM from Mr. Agman to the mayor, it says, "It's not a public comment," period. That being said, I'll play by any rules y'all want, but I don't find any rules that prohibit me from texting to anybody I want to. And so what's good for the goose, good for the gainer. Y'all just decide what game you want to play, and I'll play that. Thank you.
Kara Engel, 811 Artemani Road. Just an FYI, there's a 99% chance I might cry. And it's really hard for me to put all of my thoughts into just a few minutes. I'm a lifelong resident, a descendant of the original Italian families. I'm employed at a Tonny Town small business, and I serve on the board for the museum. I'm here tonight to stress the importance of the Tonny Town Historical Museum to the city of Tonny Town and to help answer any questions you may have to the best of my ability. The museum's value is far greater than the amount of money we bring in each year. Our efforts to preserve our heritage, both physically and in memories, go far beyond the small building that houses thousands of artifacts and the threshold of our doors. Our value lies in the trust that people have when they bring in their cherished artifacts of past generations and knowing how to properly care for them so that they are preserved for many generations to come. Our value lies in the community outreach, working together with multiple schools in our area, homeschool groups, and the University of Arkansas. Our value lies in the hands of Tonny Town families who've traveled across the world to be reunited with relatives and friends of our Italian ancestors. Our value lies in our story, one that has captured the attention of bordering towns, national podcasts, and television shows. It's captured the hearts of every person who's watched the award-winning documentary, Cries from the Cotton Field. And our value has been preserved in the memories of so many friends and relatives of Tonny Town. And my hope is that all of you understand how integral our value is to the people and to the city of Tonny Town. I haven't done all of my homework properly, but I've made a good dent. I don't have all of the answers and documents with me today, but I would love to have a conversation regarding the history of our museum and the benefit of continuing to support our efforts and watching our little museum continue to thrive. Thank you.
Kevin Maestri, also on the board with Kara. And I'll just add a couple of comments because I think I have some background that may be helpful. My dad was one of the folks that got together to set up the museum initially and found it. And one of the issues they were concerned about at the time was-- they all had a real passion for it, and they saw a future where the city was a certain size, and there may not be the folks with the passion to volunteer those hours to keep the museum going. So a decision was made at that time to make the museum a part of the city of Tonny Town, very similar to the way Shiloh Museum is a part of the city of Springdale. And that was done so that, at some point in the future, when you maybe couldn't get hundreds of volunteer hours in a week or month, that you would still have the funding and the structure in place so the museum's not dependent on a certain number of volunteers, but it has a solid foundation for the city of Tonny Town. And when you're looking at the budget for the future, just keep that in mind, that the plan was put in place like this so the museum would survive from the time they founded it in '86, for the future. So that's my two cents on the museum tonight. Thank you.
All right. Moving on to old business. First, we have a discussion of the 26th budget, multiple items pertaining to the budget as a whole. Danny?
Yes, I came up after the last city council meeting and talked with Mr. Penalto and Mr. Latham about the budget and kind of got some questions answered. I mean, if y'all could see, I've just got tons and tons of pages of figures and stuff that I went over. And a little bit of it's kind of trickled in here at the last minute. One of the things that I just got was the water and sewer budget together, combined. They're about $101,000 together. And we got a breakdown of what those fixed assets would be. That's general ledger 50/50, if you're looking at the budget. And it looks like-- in this email that I received here at 4:50, as I was getting ready to come up here, it looks like the budget was initially put up at $125,000, and it has been cut to $101,000. And in this email, it says that James is going to have to make some sacrifices. And it looks like it might be the flow monitors that are going to be affected. I'm a little set back by that because I think those flow monitors might be necessary. So cutting the water and sewer budget there, I'm a little apprehensive to do that. I think maybe we should find some other cuts. So when I looked at fixed assets for the fire department, I see we've got $252,000 for the police department. There's a couple different spots for that, but we've got $250,000, and then we have another $40,000. And when I looked at those fixed assets, some of that's for police cars and outfitting the police cars, dash cams. And then in fire department, we've got lawn mowers, thermal cameras. From what I just learned, we did have a drone in there, but it's been taken out. But I think there's things in those areas that we could probably cut and pull back some of that and get that water and sewer budget maybe adjusted. Again, I had some other questions on some payroll things that had come up, where we talked about cost of living adjustments going up. And there was a couple other spots where it was a little higher than that 3%. But after talking with the two gentlemen, I've discovered why those changes were needed and why they're necessary. So I don't have any further questions on those areas. But I don't know. I just kind of want to see where everybody else's feelings were on this and give us an opportunity before-- it looks like we've got a special tonight to pass this-- to bring up anything that they've got for the budget.
Mike, anything?
Yeah, I didn't know if anybody else got an opportunity to come up and speak to staff privately.
I do have-- I mean, all of this stuff was sent to me by Mr. Clark, I think, Mr. Latham, Chief Krug, Chief Jensen. This is all just fixed asset stuff. So it's just documentation supporting the numbers that were given in the budget. And I think that was one of the questions that was presented to us. I did get something from Mr. Penalto this afternoon. I did not print it off. It was an Excel printout of the contracts, 5590, with a breakdown by department. And I don't have that in this packet. I printed it off. I apparently did not add it to this packet. So I would like to-- I don't know if anybody else got that or not. But he did mention that you may have gotten a breakdown of that, too. Do you have that with you?
Yes, sir, it's right here. It's actually for January 2025 to December 2025. And I mean, if you speed read through it, it starts off with the cleaning of the building, a couple US bank equipment financing line items, telecom, Greg Lloyd's in there at the beginning and dissipates out towards the end when we stopped using him. Yeah, that's a whole lot in the administrative. And then if you trickle into like community development, it's almost a lot of the same stuff. You've got a lot of telecom, Greg Lloyd, Kraft and Toll. And then if you go to police-- or I'm sorry, fire department, Greg Lloyd, telecom, AAA business, that's your printers and stuff. More telecom, AAA, that's all in fire. Museum, telecom, Greg Lloyd. Centennial Bank. Centennial Bank, telecom. So these are what your contracts are. For the Parks Department, we've got a contract with Mosquito Joe, simple grants. For the police department, more telecom, more US bank financed equipment, AAA. It's almost a repetitive cycle throughout the whole list. But again, it's only for-- this is for last year, you know, for this current year, 2025. Nothing for next year and what contracts we've got. But yeah, I did receive that as well and kind of dug through that.
Yeah, I think what I was looking for was what was upcoming because some of those obviously are going to go away.
Correct.
And I know-- I understand the reason telecom's divided out because it's used by every department.
Yeah.
So I get that.
Yeah.
All right. But no, I'm satisfied, I think, with most of the stuff I got on the fixed assets portion. There were a couple other questions I had, but I can follow up with that later.
I think the mayor has something. Can they speak a little louder, please?
And so that 5590 account for contracts, if you look at January 2025 to December 2025, the total is $333,000. And what they've budgeted is $325,000. So it's actually less-- they're budgeting less from next year from what this year's kind of projected to be at. I'm sure that's what Pat would kind of say if he were here tonight. And that's where I see-- I think that's where they came up with the number. But I think it's just a projection until next year actually rolls through and actually is processing.
Actually, Mike already answered my question. The reason the telecom is on there so many times is because it is divided up in each department.
Tim?
Yeah, thank you. So a couple of things. I wanted to talk to Mr. Latham privately before I said anything publicly. But at the last meeting, Mr. Latham, I know, was upset, understandably. He's got years and years of experience. He is taking something off of our plate, trying to elevate that for us and simplify that. And I'm a numbers guy, so I think about it a little differently and want to see it a little differently. I understand that everybody wants that. But he expressed dismay at the last meeting because we'd done a budget workshop, and then he and I had not talked about my concerns. So again, I wanted to talk to Mark publicly before I said this privately. But at that budget meeting, that budget workshop, I did not expect that that was the end of that. I thought that was the beginning of a thing. But as you may recall, I left the room that night about 10 minutes before the meeting ended. I was dealing with a serious family emergency. And it was apparently a crucial 10 minutes. And in that 10 minutes, I didn't realize this was being moved on to council at that time. I did come up twice to the city to speak to the gentleman that I wanted to talk to about that during business hours. It was later in the day, but they weren't here. I now know-- poor Mr. Latham has been suffering with bacterial pneumonia. So I didn't want to say anything to-- I don't think anybody did anything wrong. That's not my point. But I do want to let you know that I was absolutely trying to do my due diligence before then, and then I've come up several times after. Mr. Latham and I have had an opportunity to talk briefly a couple of times now. I've had an opportunity to talk to James again, briefly. I've also talked to Pat Askos. I have had a chance to talk to Chief Jensen and even Chief Krug. And here's kind of where I am in this whole budget thing. I'm close enough that two weeks from now, I would probably have no problem at all saying yes to any of it. I'm sort of moving down this path. Again, I don't have a problem with anything you guys are doing. And I don't in any way intend to make you feel that I do. But as a fiduciary of the city and as a guy who looks at numbers all the time anyway, I just wanted to have some understanding of that. So I don't-- in what I've seen and what I've heard, I don't necessarily have any glaringly obvious problems. There are some things that I find a little curious here or there. I think some of that is probably just either me not understanding or whatever. Those things can be ironed out. I do want to commend you, Councilman Ramontez, for the time, energy, and effort you've put into that. And I don't know that anything needs to be changed. Maybe there are just some of us who want to know more, and next year, we just have different conversations. But I think you asked me when I walked in yesterday, what exactly is it that you're looking for? And so I'll do a better job of letting you know what those things are next year. But I appreciate your patience in putting up with me in the midst of all this. And I do hope you're feeling better soon. Glad to see you tonight.
Well, I think-- just to give you an idea, I mean-- just to give you a perspective on this whole thing. In 2023, the end of the general fund had $7.3 million in the bank. In 2024, we also bought a new ladder truck and did all kinds of stuff and still ended up with $8.1 million. You realize by the end of this year, you're going to have over $10 million. We're not stupid. We're not lying to you. We are honest. Remember, budgets are not absolutes. They're not. They are speculations of what we think we're going to have and what we need. And as I stated before, these department directors know more about what they need and what they want to do than I do. So I trust what they tell me to do. And I hope that you'll do that for us. Now, Tim, you came up and talked a little bit about, you know, the 3%. The 3% was put in-- this is not for the public safety group. They have their own thing. They have--
You're talking about salaries.
Yeah. Well, but I'm telling you, we passed-- just a reminder now, okay? We passed last year a Salary Administration Guide. That's what we're following right now for all employees. There's a merit base. This is all merit based. So not everybody's going to get 3%. Some are going to get more, some are going to get less. It's based on merit. It's not based on longevity. So currently feel like that the budget is good, and I think it's time to either fish or cut bait. That's my comment to y'all. Thank you.
Any?
Yeah, I do-- you know, I spoke of, you know, the email that we got here at 4:50 talking about, you know, the water--
know, the water and sewer budget and how it's 101 and he wanted 125 and he's going to have to find something to cut. And in the email, it says, you know, he's probably going to have to cut the monitoring meters. And for an example, when I look at the fixed assets of the fire station, I see that they're wanting a mower. I mean, does the city not have mowers already that could be used for the fire department? Or do they need a special mower to mow? That's a $19,000 ticket item in their fixed assets budget list. If we remove that from the fire department and put that into the water and sewer, that would get him to 120,000, which is 5,000 off of his mark. That's just kind of my, my thought process.
Yeah, I just, I appreciate that. I just want to point out that that is general fund and water and sewer, so you can't transfer money from one fund to the other.
So we can't move money from the general to the water and sewer?
Correct.
At all? Okay. Awesome. All right. Well, that kind of shoots down that idea.
Misty, do you have anything to add?
No, I've spoke with the ones that I had questions with, and I feel good with my answers I was given.
That's kind of where I'm at. I came and spoke with, with them about a few minor things, and I was satisfied. So anything else? I guess then we move on. And next, we have a discussion of a resolution accepting the 2026 budget. And Mr. Latham has already presented that, I believe. So further discussion? All right. Tim? I guess I'm looking for a motion, move it on then.
I make a motion to move this to the special meeting tonight.
One second. Motion dies. Relax for a second. Next, we have a discussion of a resolution to approve bids for museum repairs.
We had gone through this process recently and then kind of found ourselves back at square one. So you do have an extra item in your packet. I think it's the last set from Arcadia. That shouldn't have been in here because that was one from our first round of bids earlier in the year, I think back in July. So the ones that we're looking at, First Star Exteriors, LRD Construction, MidCon, and David's Roofing. And we asked everyone to bid the same things, replacing the roof and then repairing the siding and replacing the siding. The repair of the siding is going to leave us with kind of a dog patch looking building because of the, the siding that's on there is not available anymore. So it's going to, the, the right way to do it is to replace it. So looking at the, the three bids, we felt like we've got some experience with some folks that know David's work and have worked with him before and felt like that's the, that's the right way to go. So if you have any questions on that process or how we came up, how we came up with this, with this answer for ourselves, let me know.
So are we talking about siding and the whole nine yards or just the roof?
It's the, it's the whole thing. The, the bid number one from David's, on the back of that first page is $31,000 total for a replacement. And then when you get to the back of the fourth page, it's a $23,000 bill for just the repairs instead of the replacement.
Gotcha. What does your board recommend?
We recommended the, using David's and doing the entire replacement of the, of the siding.
How much insurance was going to pay?
Yeah, that's, is, I don't think this is in your packet. We had gotten some, yeah, 19,000 and change. And then I think there was, there was some recoverable depreciation, too, that, that made it 20 something, 22 or 3 maybe at the end of the day.
I'm thinking the number was 22 is what I called it.
My packet doesn't have David's.
Really?
Really.
Yep, the first one.
Should be the first one. Is it just out of order?
So.
Right after those budget pages.
So Mr. Ma, Maestri? Yep, sorry. Is there any reservation of why we wouldn't pick First Star, being that they're a local business? And the gentleman that represents them, except here quite a bit, for coffee and conversation. So I'm sure he'd love to earn our business. But is there a reason of a reservation on why we wouldn't go with them?
Yeah, I wanted to choose David's. I was really impressed with them, number one. And number two, they've done, they've done work around Northwest Arkansas with some of the local other museums and everything. So they're, I was very comfortable in choosing David's because, you know, the gentleman that came out, they had a lot of experience dealing with older museums, older homes. They did work on several historical homes there in downtown Bentonville. So being that our museum is over 100 years old and it's got a lot of detail and everything on it, a little bit of detail on it, I thought that was just the best fit. You know, somebody with experience with a historical home and that's who I wanted to go with.
They're also $5,500 cheaper approximately, it would appear.
Well, I, I'm inclined to agree with your board, and I'd like, I understand this has been an odd thing. Over the years, I think things have been hobbled together a little bit, and I don't think many of us understand how it works. I'm not sure that many of you understand how it works either, and we'd like to get to the bottom of that so that we all understand. But I'm sorry that you have to come to us and we didn't know that you had to come to us, and so we had to kick it down the road.
No problem, sir.
But I am inclined to make a motion to accept that offer from David's. That's the $23,078.15 bid to get an entire roof replacement instead of doing the dog patch approach. I like the.
That's.
Is that wrong?
31 is.
31. I'm sorry.
Yeah, the 23 number was the, was the repair siding. The 31 was replaced siding.
Then I, I will amend that statement. I don't have that number, however. One more. And one more again. There it is. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the full roof replacement with David's for
And the siding, is that correct?
Yeah.
Right.
Yes, sir.
So we're not really looking at an apples, to apples comparison when we look at the Five Star versus David's. We're getting siding here, too, correct?
Well, there's, there are two bids from Five Star. The full replacement from them was 28.6, and then the repair was 22.6.
Okay. Got it. Yeah. But motions out there, I'd like to make a motion to approve the David's repair, $31,649.55.
One second.
And move it to the city council.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Roco.
Misty? That's Dane. Mike?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Moving on.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thanks, folks.
Thank you, counsel.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Next, new, moving on to new business, we have a presentation from all AV services regarding the AV system in the council chambers. Mr. Spurlock.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the committee. Wanted to let you guys know, back in July, we did a scope of work authorization to be sent out to some local businesses here to look at our council chambers to be more effective, to make it more up to date, if you will. We put that scope of work around $50,000 to redo this whole chamber system. And with that, we did, we contacted three different businesses. One is here tonight to discuss, and I will say it's the only one that we probably need to look at. I'll leave that up to you guys to discuss. But what you have in your packet is the one that came, the lowest bid. The second one was well over the $50,000 scope of work, which I did not include. Another one was here locally, and they did not even provide a bid. So all AV services here in Lowell, Scott Fusselman is here to discuss anything that you may have to ask, but you do have the presentation, you do have the quote listed in your packet. If you need to ask any questions any further more detailed, he is definitely here to answer questions. But if everything, and I will say this from the standpoint of the budget, this was not listed into the budget for this year. Talked to Mr. Latham about this going forward with the revenue surplus that we're expecting. We would like to go ahead and move this forward to city council with a resolution at the city council meeting, should you choose to do so. But I will let you guys know that, that is what we're looking at at this time. So if you've got so many questions, Mr. Fusselman is here to answer. But that is the only quote that I thought was viable for what we have here for the city. So I'll try to answer any questions, and Mr. Fusselman is here as well.
So what was the difference? How outrageous were the other ones?
The other one was around $80,000. So, and then, like I said, the other one that was here locally, they did not even provide a bid.
I'm not a tech person. Can we walk through kind of what we would be? I mean, I see this stuff listed here.
Sure. Mr. Fusselman, if you'd like.
This is all mumbo jumbo to me, so.
And let me say this about him, as Madeline and I met with him, he, I can tell you, he loves his job. So hopefully he will be able to present what you guys need to hear tonight. So go ahead, Mr. Fusselman.
So you're saying it looks like gobbledygook to you a little bit?
Yeah, it does. I'm sorry. I'm not a techie person.
We're used to that. It's okay. So when we came, tried to listen to what's working and what's not, pain points. I think, as I even sit in here and observe and watch and listen, it's funny, it's just the nature of my job. I would change some things that are on my quote, being in the room and going through a meeting. Nothing major. But I think, listening to Brad, I think in the room was not a major problem. Nothing was happening consistently that was keeping you guys from doing business and listening to your, to your town and go through your meetings. I think everyone outside the room was having some pretty major problems. So the technology involved in the video conferencing, I think, was a lot of ire going on there, and we see that often. So our company has done towns smaller than this. You know, we've been in Hualasian Huffle and all the way up to Rogers and Bentonville. We've done those same, these same type rooms. So this was our solution to try to respect the budget. We could easily have done an $80,000 room. It's a piece cake. But just to match the needs that are in the room. So some of the equipment that's over here, you know, it's, it's, it's had its day in the sun and its time. So we would just update that and, and replace it. Like I said, some of these things, you're going to have a new touch panel on the back, or you have a new processor that handles all the audio. You have nine conferencing mics. And then our solution in the future is to put something in the ceiling as well that can handle, you know, poor microphone etiquette or, you know, your, your outside people aren't losing their mind because they can't hear anything. That ceiling mic is going to pick up everything that happens in the room for your outside crowd. In the room, it's always easier to say, can you talk into the mic so we can, you know, those type things. So that's a big ticket item that's on there, you'll see, but it's very important and it's a difference maker for your people outside the room. Camera replacement, so our design was to do something very similar because of what you have in the middle and, and causing that. If this isn't a problem, we would do something very similar for your general public. And then we would have two cameras dedicated to the council. One would be a wide shot, a safe shot all the time. And then when somebody's presenting something, the second camera would be able to, you know, get in closer. The technology improvement there is that depending on what microphone is active, that camera can be activated to go, there's Mrs. Piazza's speaking, and I know because her microphone is activated, so I know what to zoom in on. Nobody has to be manning that gear and doing the manual switches with the pan tilt and zoom. Kind of a neat technology function. So really, there, there are plenty of, the video distribution that's on here, you'll see for your four displays, we need to put a new box. The new thing now is called video over IP. So we're sending that video signal over a category cable. It's just, you know, just a newer version of getting that content to each individual display.
Are these being, sometimes ours work and sometimes they don't?
Okay.
Is that?
Yeah.
Like a connection glitch probably, or?
Yeah. So did not talk about that much, and I, you know, always try to bring that up. And from what I understood from the meeting I was here, this was not a pain point, and this is broken and we need to do something about this. So my guess is if, if it's very sporadic and every once in a while, and you're noticing things like, you know, they all go out or whatever, I do remember there's a splitter underneath this. So it could be that classic, the knee hits it, somebody's foot, and it kind of causes the, what happened. We can always try to relocate that equipment and tidy it up. It's kind of.
Or get smaller knees and feet.
Like, for example, we have two right now that aren't working.
Okay. Well, you know, that's the benefit. You guys can definitely communicate with Brad some things we would like to see on there. We didn't address those items specifically. I know that we had mentioned maybe in some other town, you know, we'll put what we call a confidence monitor. It's very difficult for you guys to see these and obviously what's behind you. So in a lot of, you know, other rooms, we'll put them in the back for you guys. And I don't think that was something that wanted to go down that road. Matter of fact, even the, the display replacement, they seem to be fine. And so we did not do that. As I sit in the room, I'll be honest with you, I think there's a couple of things, you know, possibilities I would definitely be open to and agree with. And if it's, you know, going to an 85-inch display there and talking about, you know, for the layperson in here, changing the format, for instance, to landscape instead of portrait to where that prints bigger, it can be easier to see. Those are things that are really not that crazy cost prohibitive. The, the really expensive stuff is already in here, the very important stuff. So changing a couple of displays out, a little bit larger, and maybe addressing a different way of doing distribution to your displays, those are not like, oh my gosh, that's going to go from 47 to 80,000. It's not going to do that.
Well, because when they, they work, they work. So I figure it's a connection issue.
Yeah. Yeah.
Displays are so inexpensive lately.
Say it again.
Displays are so inexpensive.
Very true.
Especially relative to what they were just a few years ago. I do have a question about the PTZ. Is that the one you want to replace, or is this the one you want to replace?
Yeah, we would put three in here. So one for one there, instead of a single back, there would be two. One would be the wide shot and one would be the one that would, would handle the closer action.
And likewise, these are about five or six years old.
Yep. I know that model well. We've, we've used them. They're, they're great. They're just, they're getting to that point where, you know, there's probably a good, you know, two, three years of useful life to them. The thing that you would benefit from is with the new control processor and the ceiling microphone, you're going to be able to do some things. Your cameras are going to have some intelligence built into them without having a human being that has to do the switch back and forth. It's an automated thing.
It was my first question, and you actually addressed it really early. Thank you.
Yeah. This system is, like I said, very similar with the hybrid, with the hardwired, and then in the ceiling, that's City Rogers, City of Bentonville. It's very, very similar, very time, the same system. Qsys is in both of those facilities, very time proven, four years at Rogers and six in Bentonville. So they've been reliable systems. They've been good.
And then I think we're currently using Teams. We've used Zoom in the past. Teams is sort of the bane of my existence. That's a whole nother conversation.
It is.
But all of this will work with any of that?
Absolutely. It's agnostic, so you're, you're, you've got to open platforms. So if you need to have a Zoom meeting in here, you need to have Teams. You're going to rely on your, the city-owned computers. city-owned computer to drive that. You're just double-clicking that shortcut, getting that meeting started. And the equipment that we are gonna put in that rack is gonna communicate with that and make that happen. It's gonna get all of the audio and the video to that, what we call a soft codec, that platform, Teams, Zoom, whatever.
So, is there any education that our staff would need to have to learn the news? Is it pretty user-friendly, or?
Yeah. I think it could be handled with Madeline and Brad. I think anyone's welcome to come. We usually handle that, you know. I see this as probably two full days of installation at the end of the second day would be. All who want to come, please do, and we'll go through it.
And about how long would it take you to initiate the change? If we said, yep, let's do it, how long until it's done?
I would say, you know, parts always determine that. So, I would say, probably be safe to say by the end of January is probably pretty safe.
And so, once installation, commission, and training, then what's your relationship with the city after that?
That's a great question. So, we don't, I bought this company seven years ago, and I probably need to change. But my thought is, I don't like the term, you know, the term golden handcuffs. I don't like doing these service agreements, whatever, because to me, it points to, you know, the job that we did. We're happy to support. We'll be over here to help in any way, shape, and form. Our goal is that we don't hear from you, and you're not. And I know that's everybody's goal, but that's what we stand on. That's the business we stand on, is we know we're not gonna earn the next time around if we're always having problems. And it's gonna, you know, put a hurt on me. So, I would say that we don't do those. And I know that can be scary to some people, but I hope it's comforting in a way, just as you may think it's scary. I'll draw it up. We can do it, and we'll go there. But it has not been necessary, Mike. We will support you. We'll get going. And there's always hiccups early. I mean, it's always usually the first meeting, the second one. Usually, the first one, we notice one thing, we notice two things. And we can come back out physically and do that, and make those changes, whatever we need to do. And then, usually, we're done. It's pretty locked in. And there'll be some things that are user error. I'll just be honest with you. And we can't help that. But you guys will work through that as well, and you'll know the system inside now.
But those hiccups are included in the process?
What, I'll be honest with you. I usually do, you know, like a 30 days, like that first meeting and that first comeback. We get it right, and we include that. If there's a user error in month five, well, I'm gonna charge you a service call to come out and tell you, you pushed the wrong button, and don't do that. If you guys have any other, I would love to. We want to make it right. So, if you've got some, let's make a couple little notes here about what we, some pain points we have. We'll be glad to make a couple of changes, additions, whatever. But this is respecting the budget and really mostly the outside crowd not losing their mind for different reasons.
The only question I would have is, do we have options on these microphones as far as having a way to tell the chair or the mayor when they're conducting a meeting that we've got a question rather than me just have to sit here and look over there and hope to God they look at me and wave my hand at them. Either that, or I get reprimanded for talking out of turn. So, is there a way to get a microphone that has a capability or gives some kind of notification to the chair with a little blinky bulb over there or something that?
That's a great question. So, there's some different LED lights that come, mute, active, red, green. There are another level above that have voting built in. They have the call, you know, kind of basically the yellow, I've got a question. Yeah, you can, we can do just about anything. I can show some pricing on that. They are common, usually in your, but I will tell you that neither, you know, the two larger cities that we're in, neither one of them have them. They were cost prohibitive. They asked, we provided, and never mind, we'll raise our hand.
Yeah. I kind of thought about going and getting one of those bicycle horns or something.
Great idea.
Yeah.
Bicycle horn?
Yeah.
Anyone else? So, unless we want to add something to this as extras, I guess I'm looking for someone to.
Quick question for Brad. In the budget for next year, this is already a part
It is not.
Of that?
It is not. That's why I talked to Mr. Latham about this, because it was not added when we first discussed this. Even though we had continual talks about it, it was not added. So, that's when we discussed that, since we were gonna have a surplus, to go ahead and try to do it if we could for this budget year. But if not, like I said, you know, if we can get it to move, if we need to add anything, at least move it to a resolution to look to do in this purchase.
Mr. Fussman? Would you be okay if we paid you this year?
Yeah, that would be fun.
Mr. Latham, do we have money this year? Sounds like it.
Would you guys want to see any changes or take it as is?
I guess that would be my question. Do we want any more of the bells and whistles, or?
And to Misty's point, you know, you know, a couple months back, the monitors didn't work, and it was the switch underneath there was unplugged. So, once it got, but, and since they've done the carpet, they removed everything. So, we did have a couple that has not come back online. So, we will definitely try to do our best to fix that. But there have been little glitches that we've found, but hopefully, they're fixable.
And your original scope of service was $50,000?
$50,000.
And where did that number come from?
It was something, I looked around at a few communities, Allen Springs, Rogers, just to kind of get an idea of how they use their system, Fayetteville, how they use their system, kind of pick their brain a little bit. And that's kind of where we all went with, you know, what they were doing in their meetings to make it more accessible to everybody. And so, when I've talked to a few of them, that's kind of the number we all came up with.
I appreciate you doing that homework to see what we were looking at. I do really appreciate that.
I'd like to make an odd proposal and an odd motion.
I'm an odd guy.
That's true.
Well said.
Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion that we send this to the city council meeting here in a couple of weeks with the caveat that we spend no more than $55,000.
Okay.
And then, in order for me to be comfortable with that, I would need to see what those changes would look like between now and then.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
So, that's my motion. My motion is to send this to city council with a budget of no more than $55,000 after tax.
And you're acceptable with the bender?
Yeah, I think that's fine. I like Mr. Fussman.
I do, too.
So, there's the motion.
Okay.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mike?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Move to the city council.
Thank you.
You better hurry there, sir.
Next, we have a discussion on a closed admissions animal shelter contract with Washington County. Mr. Jensen, chief.
This is something that we have, I believe, every year, agreement with Washington County's Animal Shelter. There's basically two options that we have, is an open or closed contract with them. Open is meaning that anybody from the city can take any animal to the shelter and drop it off. And then, the city is billed. The shelter should be checking addresses and making sure they are from Tonny Town, and then it's billed. Closed requires a letter from the city before the animal is accepted. So, years passed, we had a large amount of money going to the animal shelter for what we found is, pretty much everyone figured out, if you just say you're from Tonny Town, you can take a dog and, or a cat and drop it off, and then we get a bill for it. So, we went to a closed. We've been on that since then. I know there's been a lot of discussion lately about animals, animal control. And I think a lot of the frustration of people in town is that the cost has been paid upfront to the city. To get the letter, essentially, the city is charging the cost that it is for the shelter, what they charge us. So, I think it's $150. Is that right? Do you remember? $150, you get the letter, but that has to be paid to the city before the letter's handed over. So, the mayor and I had had some discussions on it. We currently don't have animal control. We don't have means to transport. So, if somebody does collect a dog and they get the letter from us, then we say, hey, pays $150, and then you can drive it to the animal shelter. So, it's not always a happy response, understandably. So, some of our discussion has been to do away with charging that upfront, the cost incurred by the city. You know, as of speak, we don't have animal control or means to transport those to the shelter. So, that was an option. And we're still having some discussions about what to do moving forward. So, I can try to answer questions if you have any.
So, if they come and ask for a letter, you're suggesting that the city pay, whereas if they just take it down there and may?
They will not accept it without a letter. And the way it stands now, they have to have the letter. So, when they come to the city to get the letter, they pay $150. And then, they take the letter with the animal to the shelter, and then it's accepted. Then, later, the city is billed for that $150. So, it's been a wash. But instead of doing that, covering the cost, and staying on a closed contract ensures that we can vet the address, and it is a resident of Tonny Town instead of just anybody.
Do you know approximately how many we, letters or closed admissions we had last year?
I don't know off the top of my hand. Both the police department and city admin, we don't collect the money from it. We have the letters on our side. Officers keep them with them. You know, if we've got an arrest or anything like that, and there's an animal in the car, we still have to provide the letter to the shelter ourselves. So, I can get with Pat and get some numbers, I know for sure, on that. So, we can get some rough numbers of what we've been billed at least.
How many people don't have the $150 and we're having, because we've got a serious animal problem here in Tonny Town. I know, I know profit has started recently. But how many just don't have the $150? So, they're still trying to figure out what to do with these animals that people are dumping all over our town?
Yeah. No, that is a good point. The $152, from my understanding, covers the spay and the neuter of the animal, any vaccinations or anything like that. And then, they try to rehome, so.
I totally get the purpose of the fee, but I know everyone may not have that when they find an animal.
So, I guess, do we need to move this on also to city?
Yeah. And I believe that this agreement is simply just for the open or closed contract with the animal shelter. The decision on the $150 and how to proceed is completely separate from this, so.
Well, I'll make a motion that we move forward with the closed contract that we have in our packet.
Second.
Move to city council?
Yes, please.
City council.
Tim?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Moving on.
Next, we have a discussion on a cost share for road improvements for Wildcat Creek with Washington County. Mr. Latham.
The road we're talking about is, it's actually off of Harmon, Harmon on the Wildcat. So, it is in the county area. Just to give you a little background, Mayor Russell and I attended, was asked to attend a meeting at Washington County and met with some officials there along with the road department crews. And just to give you a perspective on this thing, you know, the Wildcat area had a water line that was right at Dead Center in the middle of the road, and it was actually one of our big problem childs of breaking all the time. And James made the decision, I believe, a couple of years ago, that we would get a dedicated easement and move that water line outside the road, and, which has been complete. The reason for the meeting was that the road is really in pretty bad shape. He did hire somebody to come in and meet the county specs, which means any time that you open up a road like that, you have to put it back in concrete, which the city did. I bring this to you because, you know, in some of the past that I did when I was in Benton County with, especially Judge Rutherford, any time that we were looking at possibly annexing property, and we tried to share cost and upgrade the road to what the specs were. So, it wasn't a big burden on the city at that time to try to do it. So, what the county did was reach out to us, and, you know, if we want to get the assistance and try to get the road paved, just to give you an idea of this, because I think it's a good deal. I asked Zach to estimate what the cost would be if the city went, had to, let's say you annexed it in. I mean, we're looking, if we do annex, we're looking at north of Wildcat. So, eventually, you're gonna have to do that if that's what happens. His estimate was $230,000 to do .8 miles of road width, 20 feet. So, what they've agreed with us, if we're willing to do it, it's just up to the council, is to pay for asphalt that the water line was actually .8 miles and get that completed for a cost of $80,496. Basically, they have the machinery, they have the equipment, they have the manpower, and they also have the trucks to bring it from AIPAC over to there. So, they were lucky to, they were actually, AIPAC agreed to give us the price for the asphalt instead of us buying it, which would be more expensive, I will tell you, to get a price break. So, I bring this to you because, one, I think it helps us develop a relationship with Washington County, especially as we look at the annexation areas. And secondly is, is that I'm always a believer that you don't leave things halfway, that you do it right. And I think I can bring you probably two or three people that would appeal to that from the standpoint that we, if we're gonna go in and do something, we need to do it better than what it was before. So, the estimate's $80,496. And I would suggest that maybe be shared between the water department along with the street at 50/50. And, you know, eventually, you know, you could save quite a bit of money once it's annexed. So, I'll ask, entertain any questions.
Danny? Misty? Mike? Tim? Well, I guess.
So, you just need us to move this to city council, Mr. Latham?
Move this to city council for approval?
And then, we'll need a resolution for this?
I'll make that, that motion as long as we can see that ordinance. If we can get it even before the Friday before, that'd be great.
I'll second.
So, is it an ordinance or a resolution?
Should be a resolution.
Resolution?
Resolution.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
I know it's not tomato. Thank you.
And who seconded?
Misty.
Hey, Larry?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Moving on.
Next, we have a discussion on a timeline of the city attorney's actions between 2015 and 2025. Mr. Montez?
Yes, sir. Yeah. The next couple of items kind of all rolled together, but I wanted to kind of have them all broke up, broke apart. So, this first one is a timeline from 2015 to present day of actions that have taken place with city attorney-related here in, with the city council. So, January 15th, you've got a resolution that was created, 2015-01-505R. This resolution was passed and restricts access to the city attorney. I don't know if anybody's aware of that, but this action just states that the mayor is the only official that may contact the city attorney, and it requires aldermen, staff, and others to get written permission from the mayor. I don't think that any of us here have actually honored that and done honored that and done that. So this, this, this resolution is kind of moot. But you move on to December of 2015, that was the initial contract that was engaged with Attorney Eichmann and his firm for two hundred and fifty a meeting and a hundred and eighty per hour for all of their services, and it allowed a one-year extension through 2018. But they had to have mayor and council approval. If you move to December 2018, the city council reappoints Eichmann with a new engagement letter. That engagement letter did come with a price increase to about four thousand a month, and it was a flat rate. This was voted on by council and approved, and was in effect. And then in 2020, this was an interesting one to me. I don't really know what the purpose was. I'm sure there's somebody here that might be able to shed some light on that to me. But council had passed an ordinance setting the salary for any future elected attorney to zero dollars. I guess that's, in my opinion, that was to motivate nobody to run for elected attorney. I don't know. So I kind of looked for some insight on that one. And if you move to item five, which is January 29th, the 2025 engagement letter that was signed, that will be in the next talking point, was signed only by the mayor. And also, if you are following along with me, the price increase did go from four thousand and a flat rate to forty-five hundred. So we got a five hundred dollar increase. And then on top of that, the thousand dollars a month for planning commission, eighteen hundred for prosecution, three hundred a month for administrative fees, and then two hundred and fifty dollar hourly charge for any additional work. This just kind of, this timeline presents factual backgrounds on how we went about implementing different procedures for the attorney, and noticing that, you know, each time there was a price increase as it went on. And this last one, it had the price increase just like the rest, but it didn't have council blessing, so to speak. So I point that out, and that kind of just moves into the next point. But if there's any questions, or if anybody's got any insight on why we moved, or why the council moved back in 2000 to make the appointed attorney zero dollars, I think this would be an appropriate time to have that discussion.
And I know we did it, and I do not recall why we did it. That's terrible, but I know.
Were you the only one around at that point in time? I don't know if Ms. Anis, I borrow?
I was the only one that's presently on the council that was.
Okay.
Mr. Bruce, were you on the council at that time?
Was I where?
On the council in 2020?
I, I got here October 20th of 2020. So I don't remember if that was right before me or right after me. Yeah, that's before me. So no, I was not.
Okay. I just found that interesting.
Ms. Anis was, but she can't answer that tonight.
Maybe I can reach out to her personally and see if she can shed some light on what the purpose of that was, especially seeing that we're in the predicament we're in now, you know. I understand, I happen to be here for coffee and conversation, and see we engaged in attorney interviews today. So I was glad and delighted to know we're making some progress in that regard and hiring a new attorney. But, I mean, at a salary of zero dollars, it kind of gives zero enticement to anybody to want to run for attorney unless they just literally want to, you know, donate their time completely.
You do realize that's an elected attorney?
Correct.
Okay, it's not one that the city is going to be hiring?
I think that was the whole intent and purpose that we, you know, we did not want to, you know, hire
Yeah.
an attorney at the time. So we said a dollar, I mean, zero, to discourage anybody from running to the attorney.
Right, unless they just really want to be elected attorney for zero dollars. Yeah, I just, I find that interesting. It's an interesting tactic if that was the purpose of it. Yeah.
I'll look in the minutes and see if there's anything written down.
Okay.
I'll look that up.
That would be great. And Chair, if you would like, I can move on to the next point, seeing as it, as it rolls into, rolls in with that timeline and item E, if there's no other questions.
Well, I just had one.
Sure.
Do I look like a madam?
Oh, I'm sorry. Did I say madam? Sir. It's 2025, you never know.
Carry on.
Thank you. So the next one is a resolution to repeal that resolution, 2015-01-505R, the attorney contact. It says, now I just noticed it says attorney contract. It should be for attorney contact. Basically, this, repealing this resolution would reinstate the city council's, I wouldn't, I don't know if I'd call it authority, but I mean, that's a good fitting word. But we've got an obligation, if you look at the, you know, the organizational chart, we've gotten, we've got to be able to communicate with our attorney. And so I don't think this resolution is valid in what it stands on. I get, I get why it could prohibit, you know, employees here at the city from contacting an employee and bombarding them with questions. So I've taken upon myself to draft a resolution, and I can send it out to y'all, that basically repeals that resolution and adopts a new legal contact policy for employees, and basically states that, you know, city council and the mayor have the right to contact the attorney, and that the mayor has the administrative authority to delegate who here on her, in her department, you know, who can contact the attorney on her behalf, if she wants community development director to, or only department heads, you know, and how that, how that's structured. Y'all can see how that's lined out. But I think, I think we should pass a resolution repealing that existing resolution, and then forming a new policy that we're allowed to contact the attorney.
Mike?
Yeah, I'm all for repealing this resolution. I don't even know that we need to enact anything. I think we have, absolutely have the right to contact our attorney on anything that we feel like we need to contact our attorney about. So I don't know that any further act, further action beyond just repealing of this resolution would be necessary. But I'll, I'll wait for other discussion, but I'm ready to make a motion on it to go to city council to repeal it too.
Tim? Misty?
We've already been talking to the attorney on a regular basis, so yeah, it would make sense to. Do you happen to know why he passed that back in 2015?
I think, and I couldn't tell you exactly who or what, but I think at the time, our attorney was maybe charging by the hour, and they were getting a lot of phone calls from, so.
Yeah, that's correct.
Makes sense, okay.
That's, that's correct.
Yeah. Yeah, as long as our new contract doesn't say it's by the hour, and we have a working relationship with the attorney like we had previously, then I don't see any problem with doing away with this resolution.
And at that point, I, I'll keep the resolution. I've kind of drafted on file, and if we need to, we can tweak it to where we set those limits. But we don't limit city council from reaching out.
So we have a motion to repeal?
I'll make that motion. Looking for a second.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Okay, this is to repeal the resolution and move it to the city, next city council. Daniel?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Moving to city.
Okay, now I'm not sure where I need to be. Daniel?
I think we're on G on the next page.
Okay.
Correct.
That discussion, I'll let you.
Okay. Next, we have a discussion of a resolution declaring LOE 01-29-2025 with Harrington Miller invalid and without legal effect due to lack of city council approval. Danny?
Yes, sir. So like in the timeline, I said, the last engagement that we had with the attorney currently was on January 29th, 2025, where a letter of engagement was signed with, by the mayor without city council approval. I would like to put a resolution on the docket declaring that that LOE is invalid due to the lack of city council approval. And for the basis of why I come to that conclusion is pretty much what the timeline says. You know, each time there was an engagement letter signed, there was a price, there was an approval by the city council, it moved to the next, you know, years forward. Again, a price increase, city council approval. Here we are in 2025. There was a price increase, no city council approval, and thus invalid.
Okay, I've spoken with two attorneys. If the, I'm sorry.
Mayor?
Thank you.
Would you like to say something?
Yes. If the city has a contract in place, and there is a change, it does not have to go to city council. Period.
Misty? Anything?
That was the way it was explained to me when I also talked to an attorney.
Mike?
Hey, I was just going to ask Mr. Montez, I didn't see a resolution in here. And was there anything that you were wanting beyond just a resolution to declare that null and void?
No, I, just the resolution.
Okay.
I mean.
So no, I think at one point, there was mention of trying to clawback some funds?
Yeah, I don't think, I think that ship sailed. I don't know if we're going to be able to recoup those costs. It kind of comes back to the IT Greg Lloyd server issue that, you know, that's gone in the wind. I don't think we're going to be able to recoup any of that. But I think this resolution declaring that that letter of engagement is null and void due to the lack of city approval, city council approval is sufficient enough.
Well.
I don't want to.
Let me just ask, I mean, does it, does it matter at this point, since he's not here, since he's already resigned and gone? I mean, I don't know. I know this may be a contract law thing, and I certainly have no clue how to handle that. This would be a good time to have an attorney. That's a good question, too.
I have a couple of questions. I'm sorry, Mike, I ran over you. First, okay, Harrington Miller is still representing us at prosecution in Elm Springs. Would that be null and void? And second, Mr. Eichmann is our attorney of record with Washington Water lawsuit. So if we do this, is he?
I don't know. That, that's a good question, because there's also another pending litigation case that he's also the attorney on record. And I don't know, there's no representation there either. So, yeah, I mean, it opens up a whole lot of, I mean, there's already a whole can of worms open, but it just probably opens that can just a little bit more.
Anyone?
He is still representing us at the Washington Water. He will be, whenever we get a new city attorney, they will be taking over the other lawsuit.
I have a question. Since it's a whole lot of water under the bridge, what is the benefit of, of nullifying that?
Well, I guess the other alternative to being, would be to adopt it and approve it.
I'm listening.
It was made in January, it's December. You can do it twelve months later, or eleven months later.
May I ask a question, please?
Please do.
Mayor, do you have written confirmation of the statement that you made?
Actually, it was on a phone call.
If you could provide that written confirmation through whatever means, whomever you spoke with?
Absolutely.
That would probably make this a much easier
Absolutely.
decision.
And also, I would like to say, I wouldn't have signed the contract had the attorney that we were currently using not authorized me to do that. So it was done from the attorney, which had been done previously in the several, in the last several years.
That sounds like odd circular logic, though. I mean, I get it. I understand it.
So do we, do we?
Would you like to table it, Mr. Washcoyac, until such document is provided?
Yeah, I'd like to see that document. You know, again, I don't know.
It can be provided before the next
Sure, that'd be great.
Next city council.
That's fine. Yeah, so we can table this to the city council if you want.
Or move it to the city council.
Either way.
So what is it we're moving to city council?
Well, we'll move his resolution forward. But if, obviously, if the proof shows up, then I think we all know what the way to go on that. But we'll let everybody decide on their own.
We can make a motion to approve this resolution. I'll send this resolution to Mr. Armani. And then.
Is that your preference?
I mean, it kind of just moves it forward. But, I mean, and then if she provides a statement from the attorney.
Well, let me just say this. Any contract that we get, for instance, from Garver, it does, and there's been changes made. We have already said Garver is, was the engineer, I'm using them as an example. We do not have to go back every year to the city council to get approval. It's an ongoing thing until one or the other chooses to no longer be available for the city, or the city doesn't want that company anymore. That's how the contracts go.
Ethan?
No. No, I asked that question as well. Unless the price goes up more than my, than what is budgeted in the city budget.
Which going?
For the fees.
So going from four thousand monthly to seventy-six hundred monthly?
I believe.
Wouldn't do that?
No.
It's within your allotted amount, right?
Correct. And that's the same thing with any contract that we have with any company. It's the same thing.
So I, I am thoroughly confused. What, are we just moving on? Are we doing some kind of resolution? What are we doing?
Yeah, I want to move it to the next city council. Does somebody need a motion to that?
What is, Mayor, if you could indulge me, what is your spending limit capped at?
Twenty thousand.
It's capped at twenty, it's not capped at thirty-five?
No, that's what the, that's what the state recommends.
But we adopted twenty.
But we left it at twenty.
Gotcha. So at four thousand a month, I mean, twelve, that's forty-eight thousand, and then going from seventy-six thousand, or seventy-six hundred a month?
Twenty thousand a month.
Okay, twenty thousand a month, per month. Gotcha, okay.
Per project. I'm sorry, it's not per month, I apologize. It's per project.
Gotcha. So hiring the attorney is a project? Correct.
It's really not, it's a contract. But I'm not sure what, how you But I'm not sure how you're trying to make that work.
Okay. So being that it's $20,000 and it's $4,000 a month, or $7,600, it's within that allotted amount? Okay, yeah, if we can get that, I'll make a motion to move this resolution forward to the city council with the contingency that we received that email from legal counsel stating that it's null and void.
Second. Rocco?
Misty?
No.
Mike?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Tim?
This is to make it null and void versus approving it. Okay, I got it. Yes.
Larry?
No.
Not going anywhere.
I'm trying to remember which side we're on here yet.
It's three to two votes, not going anywhere.
All right. Next, we have a discussion on a resolution for the mayor to request a report from the Department of Finance on business remitting sales tax to the city of Tonnentown. Mike?
Yes, thank you. This is just for us. The reason I bring this up is it's been brought to our attention many times that we're the fiduciaries of the city. And the biggest revenue source that we have as a city are sales tax revenues. Arkansas Code 2673-115 allows a city's chief executive officer, i.e. the mayor, to request from the Arkansas Department of Finance Administration a report listing all businesses remitting sales and use taxes for the requesting governmental entity. So what they do is that they provide just that, a list of the businesses that pay sales tax to Tonnentown. And it's not just businesses that are inside the city of Tonnentown. It could be Amazon, it could be whatever. If you buy cheese from a place in Wisconsin, you know, whatever, you're gonna get charged sales. You know how it works when you buy stuff on the internet. So you're gonna see a lot of things on that. It doesn't tell us the amount, it doesn't tell us anything, but it does give us an idea of people, businesses that are remitting that sales tax to us. In the resolution, I asked for it to be done on a quarterly basis. That may be a little bit too much, I don't know, whatever the council thinks. We can do it semiannually. It's gonna be big, there'll be hundreds of businesses listed on it. You know, it just, it's just a way to show the citizens of the town, to show us who's paying sales tax. Maybe not who isn't, but it's showing who is. So it's something for us to look at. So you guys can read the resolution, if you've got anything that you want to add to it, anything that you wanted to amend. The only thing that I really wanted to add is under section two, that such report be provided on a quarterly basis. Again, if y'all don't want to see it every quarter, that's fine. But I'd like to see it just in its native format, as it's remitted or sent back to the city. So I would add that as part of, the report shall be provided in its native format on a quarterly basis. And that's all I have to that.
Yeah, I like that. I don't, I don't know if semis, that's gonna be bigger. The more frequent you make it, the smaller it'll be.
Maybe, maybe.
I mean, I would think, you know, obviously, yeah, there's gonna be peak times and stuff like that. But if you do a semi, it's gonna be that much bigger. But yeah, I'm here to hear whatever the rest of the discussion is.
Misty?
I'm good with quarterly. And just a thing to note, this is why it's so important for everyone to change their address to Tonnentown. Because if it's saying Springdale, Springdale's getting that tax, not us. And so that's why it's so important for us to educate that people need to be changing their address to Tonnentown so that we're getting the, sell the tax dollars. So I think this is a great ad, Mike.
Mayor?
All right, just to let all of the council know, we are only allowed a limited amount of times that we can ask for that per year.
Oh, okay.
Do you know what that limit is?
I believe it's three.
So we get three times a year?
Yep.
Three or two, whatever.
Like, for instance, I did one, I did one today, I sent it to you guys. I sent the email to Mr. Yansey. And he said, I'm sorry, we can't get it to you through December the first. You have to, it can only be in certain periods. So even if you said in the middle of July, you're only gonna get the first quarter, the first section, so.
Yeah, they're behind, what, 90 days?
They said that if I did, if I, well, you saw the email. They said that if we wanted the whole year, that they wouldn't be able to get it to us until February.
Okay, so maybe we should wait until February and ask for the whole year.
Okay, I love the idea. And the council member Piazza's point, I couldn't agree more on every point she made. We absolutely need to, need to understand what's up. And it's not that we're trying to police anything per se, but those sales taxes shouldn't be coming to us. So I think it's just, if nothing else, it's just a list that shows us what's happening. And then we can go and educate from that point. With that said, yes, I'd like to get those as often as possible. If that's three times, super. If it's four times, fantastic. If it's 12 times, let's do that. And I would be inclined, I think, to do it now. And then maybe again in February to get the whole year. But I mean, to get what we can. I mean, I know we can't necessarily get it right now, but.
You got it today.
Oh, that's right, sorry. I'm still reeling from much of today, so forgive me for that. But yes, so to Mike's point, an annual listing would be great. But just to have the list, I'm more, I'm more interested in the list of names than I am the amount of money at this particular point in time.
It doesn't show the amount of money.
Can we ever get that?
No, no.
You don't get it either?
No.
Okay, well, that's helpful. So yeah, I mean, whatever it is that you guys want to do with it, I'm in.
I think there is a place where you can find where the amount of money that's remitted to the town, but it doesn't break it out by business, well, maybe it does. It seems like we were discussing this in the fore, beforehand. The paper used to have sales tax paid by businesses in the city. I don't know where to find that online, but quite frankly, I haven't looked for it in a long time either. But it may still be out there that we can find that. So I'll do some digging into that and see if we can find numbers. But this at least gives us a start.
So we need to change this because if we do this resolution, quarterly will not work.
I don't know the word for three times a year. I know semiannual, is it triannual? I don't think that's the word.
I don't think that's the word.
We can put specific, maybe we want to do April 15th, August 15th, and December 15th.
Well, September is, on the email today, September the 30th was like the first and second quarter. So it might be a good idea just to table this until we get an attorney hired and then.
That's fine. It's, there's no rush and it'll give the people some time.
I mean, we can contact them and find out what the dates are.
That's fine, too.
That makes sense.
You're talking about dates that, that. They, they end. So you, you're, let me see if I understand what you're saying. If you ask for it now, they're gonna be 60 days behind.
Okay, so I asked for it today. And as you saw from the email, they are only able to provide us through September 30th. From January to September 30th.
Right, so that's.
So that's the first two quarters. So we would want to ask for it October 1st, and then you'd get the first two quarters. First three quarters. We're only allowed to ask for it for three times a year. But I do know that from the email today, it was.
So.
September 30th.
Tradically, by the end of March, they should have the fourth quarter of '25.
On the email today, he told me February. On the, if you've read all of the connecting emails.
I did not, sorry.
No, it's, no, it's fine. But if you go back and look on the connecting emails, it will tell you when we're able to get it.
Maybe I should look at that. I don't have a problem if we, I mean, you know, if we want to tighten the language up and bring it back in January, I'm fine with that. That way, we can have dates. If y'all want to push it to the Cal, I'm okay with that. People can look up and see the dates that are in that email. So. And we've got the latest report today. So I'm good with pushing it to January.
Motion to table then?
Yeah, I'll make that motion to table my own resolution.
To January.
To Cal, yeah.
I'll second.
Rocco?
Mike?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Misty? Table until January Cal.
Next, we have a discussion on supporting museum funding. Tim?
Thank you, appreciate it. You know, it's Christmas time. And as happens every year at Christmas time, there are naughty elves. And some naughty elves have been spreading some stories about me being opposed to the Tonnentown Museum. The stories couldn't be further from the truth, but they don't fit the narrative of those naughty elves. So you can't believe everything you hear, you can't believe everything you read online. In fact, I wouldn't believe anything you read online. And I think some of this evening's public comments are based on that misinformation. What I'd like to discuss this evening is how we can best support our beloved museum. As I mentioned earlier, I think many of us don't fully understand the current relationship the city has with the museum board. Things have been hobbled together over the years, we just don't get it. And I think we need to understand that. I've spoken to Mr. Latham on many occasions, as recently as this morning. And with over 40 years of experience in governments, not just here locally, but in other states, he doesn't get it either, and he says he's never seen anything quite like it. I've had an opportunity to chat with a delightful woman, Angie Albright, who is the Shiloh Museum Director, who has a great relationship and thinks very highly of the work that you're doing, as do I. And she's agreed to be a resource as we navigate how we can best support funding our museum. I think we probably, as a council, need to have a workshop on how to best clarify the roles and responsibilities. I think you guys should be there as well. But aside from that discussion, I wanted to briefly mention just a few ideas. These are just ideas, and we can fall anywhere in the middle, but I wanted to throw some stuff out there. One position that we could take is that we can give the museum a more prominent position in the city. And not just in the Parks Department, but as the crown jewel of the Parks Department in the city. We are different, we are special. We have a unique and wonderful heritage that needs to be celebrated. And when we can get thousands of people to come spend their Halloween with us, that's great. But it doesn't highlight Tonnentown. And I would love to see a series of festivals and special events with the museum as that centerpiece. Events with names like Fall in Love with Tonnentown, autumn themed. Spring into Tonnentown, spring themed. Hot Tonnentown Summer, a Tonnentown Harvest, a Tonnentown Christmas. Wouldn't it be wonderful if at every season, we highlight in purple what makes us unique and special? And highlights the work that you're doing. Now, to do that, we need to do some things that allow for that. So right now, you're under the city, sort of. And in other ways, you're not. So when you have to come to the council and ask about things, I think if we go in that direction, the direction I mentioned, it would require that the museum board act in an advisory role, like the museum board does at Shiloh. But the council would be the one to make those decisions. The council, by law, acts as a group of fiduciaries when it comes to spending taxpayer money. And so we would have to be the ones to make those decisions. Another idea is we could create an endowment, and we could actually do this in conjunction, like Shiloh has done. Shiloh uses the Arkansas Community Foundation as the custodian of their endowment. And as custodians, think of it like a bank, and there's lots of different accounts in there. And one of those accounts is the Shiloh account. And people can put money in there, get a taxable donation, a tax deductible donation for that. And then there's a group of advisors that manage that. And their fund right now, they. But that, that endowment is currently $3.8 million. And Shiloh has the ability to spend a certain percentage of that money in any given year. That current annual spending limit for them this year is about $600,000. It's a lot of money. I think it would take us a while to get there, but that would be a potentially wonderful opportunity for the museum. Lastly, we could let the museum run free. We could cut you guys loose, we could let you guys be in the city, not of the city government, so to speak. In that case, the museum would become its own 501(c)(3). Again, it could get donations from people, those would be tax deductible donations. There is a way to do that even under the city auspices, we just have to navigate that and work through it. But if you guys were your own 501(c)(3), you could make all your own decisions. If that is the decision that was ultimately made, I would want the city to be generous and give you some really nice parting gifts. The first thing I'd want to give is an upfront check of a million dollars. That million dollars would give you roughly 10 years' worth of funding at your current rate. I think we should also do things like sell you that house at a discounted rate, or give it to you, if that's the direction. Now, again, these are just ideas. But what I want you to know is, when I ask questions as a fiduciary, it doesn't mean I have anything against what you're trying to do. What I want to do is celebrate what is uniquely special about the place I moved 1,200 miles to raise my family in. With that said, I'm open to any discussion here tonight. But I do think it's important that we have a workshop where we all sort of talk. I'm open to any suggestions. You'd have to ask the chair.
Sir, ma'am? To a couple of those points, and I 1,000% agree with a workshop. I actually was just talking about that today. And again, I've done some homework, obviously, I don't have any of that with me. But I have a better understanding. My understanding of the museum, my whole life, has just been because it's Tonnentown and next to God and family, that's the thing I love the most. And so we are 100% under the city when it comes to spending. Our budget is approved by y'all. And just like with this roof repair, we have to come to y'all because the city, the city is paying for that out of our budget, right? So it's over $20,000, that has to be approved by you. So, but, but our funds, and I don't know if any of you guys know this, but our funds, the kind of. This public and saying things publicly always comes back to get you. But initially started in Danny Watson's term. We are working on getting those minutes and getting that information to know exactly how that came forward. There was a group of folks that were like in the creation of the museum. But we, we weren't open very often, we weren't even open all year, it was strictly volunteers. And so, but we wanted to grow, we wanted to do better moving forward as the town grew, as we grew. And in Danny Watson's time, again, I don't know all of the ins and outs of it, but there was, he, his crew at that time, they voted to take $100,000 from city funds and put that into a, using. and put that into a, using this loosely, savings. And over time, um, again, we don't make very much money, but we do have our Amici memberships. We have, you know, any of the donations that we receive. That goes into, you know, anything that we receive goes into that fund. And so it has grown. Um, and, and the intention of that was hopefully someday to be able to, it's a building fund, to hopefully be able to expand, build on, do more with the artifacts that we have. Um, and we're hoping to get that ball rolling sometime soon. Um, but everything is under the city as far as the umbrella, so I agree there's some questions on what does our role as, we're volunteers on the board. We're just volunteers. And, um, and I think there is some question on, like, why? Why us? Why are, why is there a board that gets to make these choices, right? Um, I think there's lots to learn on both sides of that. Um, we want to work with the city. We want to keep doing things. And to another point, we do have two events per year. Um, we have our May event that we've had for many decades. Um, last year, I don't, we didn't have thousands like the free candy brings to those in the park in October. Um, but we have, um, our Heritage Days. It used to be the May event. Now it's usually the first Sunday in June. Um, but it's Heritage Days. It's in Arkansas themed, but we celebrated ourselves here in Tiny Town in, um, typically the last Sunday in May or the first Sunday in June, whatever that kind of falls for the calendar. And then every November, we host our Palenta Smear. And we have people, you know, come home. It's, it's called the Old Fashioned Reunion. And so it's a, it's a reunion, but we do a taste of Tiny Town. And so we served food this year um, to uh, over, I think it was close to 300 people that we had in the hall. And, um, and we do all of, I mean, all of that is from our budget plus our volunteer time and money and blood, sweat, and tears. And so, um, I, I agree. I appreciate the acknowledgement on that. And, um, I think we are happy to have that conversation. Like I said, I've already been doing my homework a little bit, reaching out to unfortunately so many of those that did start this and, and set the, you know, set the precedence for us. They are not here anymore. Um, but we still have some who are highly motivated and, um, dedicated and have been in the past. And so we're working on getting some of those records for how things came about, when they came about. And, and we are happy to have time with y'all. Um, would love to have time with y'all so that we can, shit, one, show you everything that we're doing. Um, because we have come far and wide. I'm actually going to a conference in January representing Tiny Town um, on my own money, by the way, not from the museum's budget. And, um, so we're doing lots of great things. We'd love to have a workshop, and I think that that's, you know, great to, to start.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
I will say, Tim, the endowment is something that we've been talking about the last quarter. We had, um, your, our last board member that we brought on, Rachel, she works with the Walt Mar Center, and she's helping us learn the different ways-
Awesome.
-that we can, uh, grow correctly. So endowment is something we're learning about. We're all volunteers. None of us are experts. Um, our staff is experts at this point. Emily's even got her degree is in history. So, um, but there's a lot that goes into running a museum that you don't know what you're doing unless you're doing the museum. I mean, it's special. It's not the City Hall. It's, it's own roles at the museum, and that's where the board helps. So a workshop would be a great thing to have so that the council can understand. I mean, we probably put in 150 hours a year of volunteer hours on our own to run the museum, um, to help the staff do what they need to do. So, and the council's been gracious enough to give us some stuff. And the things they have done in the year and a half that we've had that staff um, has been incredible. We did not have the outreach. We did not have, I mean, Pam was 12 hours a week. Um, and she opened the doors, and that was about it. We didn't get to do collections very much. We didn't do, I mean, Charlotte Piazza was a curator for 30 years, and she volunteered all of her time. She taught herself how to take care of things. Slapped my hand a few times if I touched things incorrectly. She didn't educate very well on teaching you how to touch stuff. But, um, you know, we've all learned as we went. Um, but we are looking, we always want to partner with the city and find ways to make this work where everybody understands how we're set up and how we need to be set up for the future. But the, the city does own the house. And is, you know, so we're just trying to do that, how we need to do it. But an endowment is something we, we are learning about. I still know nothing. Still got a lot to learn. But it is something that has come up in discussion.
Wonderful.
Hi, anything?
No, I, I- Good presentation, Mr. Burris.
Danny, anything?
Set up a workshop at some point in time? Is that-
After Christmas.
After Christmas, preferably.
After Christmas, you think?
Without a doubt.
Oh, we have plenty of time before that, don't we?
Days and days.
Yeah.
And we also would like, um, if each council member could pull together what you would like us to help get together for you, so that way we make sure we're answering your questions. If that makes sense.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, honestly, I don't even know that I have a lot of questions. Um, it, it's just understanding how it all fits. Thank you, though.
Do you have, um, um, your ideas in writing?
Do I?
Yes.
I, I, I just wrote them today so that I could say them.
If you, if you have something that, like you said, or if you want to add to that or whatever before the workshop, if you, I, I would like a copy of it because I thought it was well said. So I'd, I'd like a copy of it.
Uh, I will, I will provide a copy. Should I send that to Mrs. Artemati for distribution?
If you'd like.
Okay.
I don't know why it couldn't go to the whole council. I don't think there's anything-
Yeah, it's just fine.
Just email it.
We just don't respond to it. Just email it to anybody.
Right. I'll just send you some bullet points then.
Thank you.
Next, we have a discussion about end of year bonus for our employees. And this is on me, and we do this every year when we've accomplished good things for the year and our employees have accomplished good things. And I think we've got a great staff. Uh, pit them against anybody. They, they go out and they work together. They do what has to be done, when it needs to be done. And Mark has told us that we have a very small surplus that we can, uh, we can distribute and perhaps help some people with their Christmas or their taxes or just bills or just whatever. And in the past, we have done $1,000 for full-time employees that have been with us over a year and prorated it for anyone who's been with us for less than a year. So, uh, without any further ado or I guess begging or pleading, I'm going to ask the council to say either, uh, make a motion to, to say yes to that or shoot me down, so. Mike?
We've always done it. I just think, um, um, this will need to be added into the budget, right? And for, but, but this is the end of year. I'm sorry. Never mind. Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm brain dead. I'm, I'm with you.
Tim?
We do it every year. Merry Christmas.
Danny?
No, I'm, I'm good. I like it.
Do have a small ask. Is it possible, looking at doing a smaller amount for our part-time employees? We have a handful. And, uh, they work just as hard as our full-time employees. Um, maybe not the full amount, but maybe half or even $300 just to say Merry Christmas to the part-time employees.
Who are we referring to? I'm, I'm lost.
Um, I know for sure we have one at the museum, but-
Oh, 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 I'm with you. I'm with you.
I know. I don't, I don't know what it'd look like for fire and police, but I know that they have some-
Uh, fire and police are not included in that. They, they get a different, different, uh, thing entirely. They're-
I mean, it's y'all's call on that. Um, I just, that's always been something I thought about.
Mayor, what do you think?
I, I had a concern over how many part-time that we have in the Fire Department and the Police Department. So can we specify, um, how many hours?
I, I mean, I'm open to suggestions. I just, I've, every year I've watched them get nothing with everyone else getting a bonus, and it just kind of breaks my heart a little bit.
I agree. I agree. But is there some way that we can work this where, um-
Hours a week?
Chief, can you help me with that? Is, you know, how many?
Because that would be half a, a week, or like that'd be halftime.
Uh, we end up having, like, there's actually almost 34 people on our books, and half of those are part-time, so.
Do they work 20 hours a week?
No, and that's where I'm getting that. And you could go back. So we have part-time and auxiliary, and auxiliary doesn't get paid, so I'd just be kind of cognizant of what you say, like, well, it's part-time because definitely, yeah, definitely make a minimum hours worked and over the past six months or whatever you want to do.
Yeah, the year, I think the year qualification, just like we do for the others.
Because we have them. They would come out and work Grape Festival or something like that. So they would hit that time then, but then they're not going to work that for-
Right.
-three or four months, so.
Yeah, regular full, you know.
That's what we were talking about back there. I was like, we have 30 something people, so.
Yeah.
So can we say part-time that work 20 hours or more?
Over a year.
You know, a year's time or a month or a week or what?
A week.
A week.
A week.
A week. Weekly.
And how does that change the math? Sorry, how does that change the math?
Well, it'd be a smaller bonus.
Sure. But what would that small bonus be? And how many of those people would get that? And what, what does that equal?
How many, Chief, do you have that would qualify for the 20 a week?
We won't have any that would receive that pay. And the majority of what we had are part-time or full-time in other cities. Um, this is, you know, they provide a specialized service to us when, or as needed, so, um, that'll see a, anybody on our side of things that would, that would qualify for it.
Just a thing, you guys that know me well and have followed my trajectory over the last five years, uh, you know that as a general rule, I, I would rather people just make more money throughout the year than get a bonus at the end of the year. But when we do something like this, it, it creates an entitlement, right? And, and it gets to the point where if we said this year, we're not doing it, everybody gets really upset, right? Understandably. And so I've, I've, I've gotten behind the idea of, of the full-time employees getting this thing. But if we set it up for part-time or people who work five hours or people who show up and volunteer for this or that, or, you know, people who have, you know, green eyes or are left-handed or whatever, it, it very quickly becomes an entitlement in and of itself. And so I, I, I don't at all mind showering money in certain areas when appropriate. But I, I would rather we not create another entitlement. And I'd rather encourage our full-time employees. It's not to say that part-time employees don't work hard. Of course they work hard. So do our, our, our full-time people. But um, as much as I want to say, yes, give everybody money and chocolate and candy, uh, I, I just, I, I think it's a, a bad precedent to start. But yes, chocolate and candy.
I think we're only looking at one or two. That's it.
Right, but, but that's one or two now. But then there's this new part-time people, and then part-time grows to five, and then eight, and then 15. And, and again, it doesn't take long before, if we ever don't do this, it becomes not, it, it, it goes from being the blessing that it is to being considered an annoyance that it's not.
Or we could just give the pile of money to the department heads and let them decide how to dispense the bonuses. Make them either.
Pat would have an issue with that, I'm afraid.
So I guess, uh, I need nothing is, nothing's been approved for part-timers, so I, I guess I need approval for the full-time people and at a thousand and prorated up. Taxes deducted.
There's only two part-time people. I'm throwing them in there too.
Oh, come on.
You're throwing the two part-timers in?
I understand where you're coming from, Tim.
I do too, actually. I'm a part-timer, and I still expect a Christmas bonus.
It's really hard whenever you have someone that's there every week, even if they're there only 20 hours a week. Uh, and they see everybody else getting, and they work, they're 20 hours. Plus, I know that they stay overtime. Not overtime, I'm sorry. They stay more than their hours working for free. And, um, I hate to leave, leave it out.
Okay, if we prorated that out, then that would be 500 less taxes for two people.
Okay, so it's really nice to play Santa, but it's not my money. And it's not your money either.
You're right.
I agree, and I don't think that any, um, I, I don't think that, um, a lot of people would argue that. I, I just don't, I mean, people that's working here, they're working for us. They're working for the city.
I understand. I, again, it's become an entitlement even in your mind, right? It became an entitlement in Paul's mind. It became an entitlement in your mind. And I, I get it. But we've done it every year. So again, if we don't do it now, we look like we're, we're not doing the right thing. I'm fine giving the full-timers money. I want to reward the faithful. I've got no problem at all with that. But to step into, even if it's one person, I don't mean any offense to those people. It's just it creates a brand-new entitlement, and we cannot undo them. So again, Santa, that's awesome. Play Santa all day long. I'm with you. I'll, I'll stuff the stockings.
Okay, I, I just wanted to say I didn't think it was an entitlement. Every job that I've ever worked at, every job my husband's worked at, we get, we were able to get a bonus because they appreciated us.
I, I think that's great. And I appreciate all of our employees so much, I'd rather they get raises instead. But if we get $1,000 at the end of the year, that's great. But now, instead of them getting an extra $1,000 bucks in their paychecks every week or, you know, over the course of a year, which I understand feels like less, I, I get it. I, I, I'm not arguing at all giving a $1,000 bonus to full-time employees. And I understand the thought process of not feeling that it's an entitlement. But an entitlement just means, over time, I feel that I deserve a thing. And, and they do. Everybody will, understandably. I got it last year. Why wouldn't I get it this year? So I, I don't mean it to be a big thing. Again, a couple of years ago, I stopped having this discussion because I'm totally fine with it. But I will tell you that I absolutely vote yes on full-time getting a $1,000 bonus, but I will have to vote no if those things are linked together.
Yep. I'll just make one suggestion, and I'm just trying to maybe clarify or maybe give a definition instead of part-time. If you want to do it, it's people who are employed eligible for benefits.
Yep.
So if they're eligible for benefits, then I say sure. If they're not eligible for benefits, and that's where I'm getting that, because you got, you're splitting hairs. I'm all about getting the bonuses for everybody. But I also say there's also a difference too. If they're not eligible for benefits, why are they eligible for the bonus? Just throwing that out there. I'm not trying, I don't know who is, so that might be a defining answer.
It, it's a question I've asked every year, even before I got on council, and I'm just publicly throwing it out there now.
I was saying that might be a way to define instead of part-time or whoever, just whoever's eligible for benefits.
That's well thought.
It is.
Thank you. Okay, so $1,000 for full-time prorated for all our full-time people that hadn't been here a year. Do I hear a yay?
Can I hear that again?
$1,000 for full-time employees prorated for anybody that's full-time that has not been here a year.
They had to be here a year to get any of it.
You, no, if you've been here nine months, you get, you get three-quarters of a thousand.
Is that what they did last year?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't remember that.
I'll make a motion to approve that.
Looking for a second.
I'll say it.
Roll call.
Mike?
Yes.
Tam?
Yes.
Larry?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Misty?
Yes.
Next, we have comments from our council members. Mike?
Thank you. Um, Mr. Burris took a lot of what I was going to say, um, you know, about the museum. He said a lot of good things about the museum. And I've mentioned this before, uh, I would like to see, uh, the mu- And I've mentioned this before, I would like to see the museum incorporated with a library in Tonny Town at some point in time. I think they belong hand in hand. And maybe with this budget issue and bonus issue, maybe we need to add it into the 26 budget. I don't know. Avoid this discussion again next year. Also, Thanksgiving, I had a great Thanksgiving. All three of my boys were home. It's the first time we've had them all together in the house in a long, long time, so it's good to see them. We had a large contingent of my wife's family over for Thanksgiving. My wife has a big family, so it was noisy. And also, we've got some pretty good news. There'll be hopefully a new addition to the family, as my oldest son and his wife are expecting, so I will become a grandparent at some point next summer, so.
Hey, hey.
That's awesome.
Congratulations.
Yeah, so, then that's it for me. Thanks for coming out, everybody.
Tim?
It's been a long day. Tuesdays often are. And I've often said, and I'm sorry that I say it, that Tuesday's not my favorite day of the week. This is the day the Lord has made, and I will rejoice and be glad in it. And I'm glad that I got to spend the evening with you. So thank you all for being here.
Misty?
Thank you all, everyone, for coming out tonight. Some good conversation was had tonight. I'm excited to see where it could go. It's an honor to be a part of the museum and do that and carry on tradition from my husband's family that started, helped start it. We're like the tourism of the town. And when they come here, they don't just come to the museum, they go and eat at the local restaurants, and they go and learn our history. So they're, we're bringing business into this town and helping them learn all the things that were brought here by the past. So I'm excited to continue that history. Thank you all for coming out tonight.
Danny?
I just want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. Thank you to all the staff that we have in the building. We appreciate you. And I look forward to the discussions we have with the museum. So I hope we pick a date out in hopefully January or sometime next year, continue those discussions. And, yeah, I think it was a great, great constructive meeting tonight, so thank you all.
All right. Same. I truly want to thank all of our staff. I mean, from the bottom up, from part-timers, I'm sorry, to the, you know, they're out there, they're giving it their all all the time. And Tim talked about the museum, and I don't want to take anything away from how Tim feels, but unless you're from Tonny Town, unless you've been here all your life, you just, I just don't think anybody can get it, you know? And it's, it's just part of you. And so I'm anxious to see how the workshop goes and where it goes. And again, thank you, everybody, and God bless. Mayor?
I just wanted to say that we wrapped up the interviews with the attorney today. Hopefully, we'll be getting some more information out to everyone since we're going through this process. The scorecards are going to be sent to me tomorrow, and we will hopefully try to get an attorney in here as quickly as we possibly can, but we are still working on it. Thank you, guys. Cara Jo, you're amazing. I love you. Just want to say, you did a great job. But appreciate you all. Thank you. Y'all have a good night.
And with that, I seek a German. Everybody in favor, say aye.
Aye.